Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Bellevue City Council meeting for January 8th, 2024. City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen-House, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands where the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and justice for all.
So we have two proclamations tonight, one of which is for Dr. Martin Luther Jr., King Jr. Day, which is Monday, January 15th. And this is, we're going, not going to hold our council meeting on that holiday. So our next Bellevue City Council meeting will be on January 22nd because this is typically a day of service and of reflection on the work and legacy of Dr. King and others who further civil liberties and equality in the country and around the world. And so our city is again hosting our annual MLK Celebration and Health Fair in partnership with the Bellevue Alumni Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority for their 20th year. Rivian Smith is here tonight, and I see with others as well, representing the sorority. And I want to thank you for being here and for your longstanding partnership. I always so enjoy that health fair. I think I've been to one every year in the 10 years that I've been on the council. And the last two years were virtual, so it's really great to have them in person again. The theme of this year's MLK event is health equity, and I really appreciate that theme. I'm on the, I was on the Mental Illness Drug Dependency Board with King County, and we were asked to read a book called Social Injustice and Mental Health by Ruth Schim and Sarah Vinson. And it was such a wonderful book about health equity. So I appreciate what you're doing. I recommend anybody interested in this topic to read that book. There'll be health vendors, wellness presentations, a keynote address, and live performances from local artists. So I'm looking forward to being there and to seeing everyone there as well. And with that, I'm going to ask Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Malakutian to read the proclamation.
Of course. Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life of serving others and fighting for equality, reminding us that justice too long delayed is justice denied, and every step toward the goal of justice requires sacrifice, suffering, and struggle. The tireless exertions and passionate concern of dedicated individuals. And whereas many inequities during Dr. King's lifetime still persist today, as demonstrated through desperate outcomes in health, housing access, education, and financial stability, in addition to continuing social and racial injustices of our time. And whereas, when Dr. King spoke at the March on Washington, he described a fierce urgency of now to take action toward equality. More than 50 years later, his words have an enduring relevance in our time. And whereas, on Martin Luther King's Junior Day, we honor and celebrate these civil rights icon and visionary leaders who's resistant to injustices, including racial segregation, economic disparities, employment discrimination, and denial of the right to vote, raised awareness and spurred action toward expanding access to opportunity and ending structural inequities for all people. And whereas, the city of Bellevue is committed to ensuring access, equity, inclusion, and opportunity, sharing the belief that the time is now to act with swift urgency to deliver on the promise of Dr. King's mission to foster a beloved community. And whereas, we honor Dr. King's legacy with an annual local celebration and health fair being held in person on January 15, 2024, at Crossroads Bellevue from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and a national day of service to remind us that we are stronger when we march forward together. Now therefore, I, Mo Malakutian, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim January 15, 2024 as Martin Luther King's Junior Day in Bellevue and urge all residents to attend MLK Day health fair events, including the one at Crossroads Bellevue, and visit www.mlkday.gov to learn more about service opportunities across our country. I think now we are going to give you to Rivian and Eva and everyone else to give you this proclamation.
You know what? I forgot to tell you, we're going to have them speak first.
First.
And then we'll do that. So please come up.
Then picture.
Thank you all. Joining Rivian is also the president of the chapter, who did not know she would be here tonight. So this is Eva. Well, actually Rivian will introduce her.
Okay.
Rivian?
Good evening, and thank you so much. I'm going to try to compose myself because this acknowledgement is very near and dear to my heart, being that I'm a charter member. And this is anniversary, January is anniversary of our chapter history. So we will have served this community really in over 35 years, but partnered with the City of Bellevue for 20. And Eva Edwards is our current president of the chapter. And so as I said, it is with great honor that I accept this proclamation very humbly. It's a tribute to the work that we have done, and we're just a very small chapter. And over 16 years, we had tried to meet the goal of honoring Dr. Martin Luther King because he was all about service. And one letter that I would like to encourage us all to read, because I think it points to the heart and soul of the man, and it's a letter he wrote from jail when he was jailed in Birmingham, Alabama. And he wrote it to appease the hearts and souls of fake clergy who wanted to go to the courts to do it. But he said that protest was a way of drawing attention to the need, and it was an active notice of what needs to be done. So on behalf of the chapter of Bellevue, it is an honor and pleasure to accept this proclamation, and we look forward to 20 more years of giving service to your community.
Wonderful.
Mayor Robinson.
Anybody else want to speak?
Yes, I would like to recognize two other sororities that are here. Would you please stand?
Well, let's go, let's go down and have a picture. Thank you. Okay, our next proclamation is going to be read by Councilmember Hamilton for Korean American Day, and we have Soon Kim and Su Jong Kim here to accept that. So we'll do the same thing. We'll read the proclamation. Have you come if you have something to say, and then we'll do a picture, okay? Go ahead.
Thank you. Whereas the city of Bellevue is home to many Korean Americans who contribute to the city's diverse cultural and economic well-being, with Korean being the third most spoken language in Bellevue. And whereas, the U.S. Census estimates that 2 million people of Korean descent currently reside in the United States. And whereas, Korean American Day commemorates the arrival of the first Korean immigrants to the United States and honors Korean Americans' incredible resilience and contributions to society. And whereas, the Commemorative Day was officially recognized by the U.S. Senate and House in 2005. And whereas, Korean influences in Bellevue range from business development investments, especially in the tech industry, to a rich variety of Korean restaurants and shops, to bilingual education programs in our schools, and one of the first Korean schools in the U.S. that is a vital part of Korean American education for our region. And whereas, the city of Bellevue recognizes and appreciates the strength of our community's diversity, including the important influences from Korean Americans that are worth celebrating and emphasizing. Now therefore, I, Dave Hamilton, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim January 13th, 2024 as Korean American Day in Bellevue to honor the contributions and cultural influences of Korean Americans as key attributes in Bellevue and our region. I encourage community members to attend regional celebration events, including a local Korean American Day celebration hosted by the Washington State Korean American Day Celebration Foundation on January 13th.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and speak?
While she's sitting, my name is Soon Kim. I'm a board chair of Washington State Korean American Day Celebration Foundation.
My name, my name's Su Jong Yoon. I'm the member of, you know, Korean American Day, 17 Korean American Day committee members. So I'm so pleased to be here to honorable, meaningful, you know, events proclaim the Korean American Day today. So I'm the one of the, you know, 440,000 peoples living in Washington. So I'm the one of them, you know, so I'm so pleased to, you know, give a thanks, thanks again, you know, for all of your Bellevue City council members. Thank you.
Su Jong, I'm so sorry I said your name wrong.
Okay. Yeah, Su Jong Yoon.
Last name. Okay.
And I'm so honored and humbled to accept this proclamation on behalf of all Korean American community. And it is such an honor that you recognize that Korean Americans contributed to our society, especially in Bellevue, in many different ways, economically, socially, and, you know, politically, hopefully. And I really feel grateful to all of you council members and also including Mayor Robinson. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's January 13th, you know, it's going to be a celebration for all Korean American, you know, residents or citizen, you know, or Korean Americans. So last time I remember, Tseulabukdo, Tseulabukdo, you know, is having, Tseulabukdo.
Back up from the microphone just a bit. There you go.
Yeah, Tseulabukdo, we have celebrate for, you know, we are sister, you know, city of Tseulabukdo, Tseulabukdo, that's my hometown also. So I'm, we are so glad to, you know, Bellevue City proclaim the Korean American Day. Thanks again.
Hello, my name is Crystal Choi. I'm also the member of the Korean American Day Celebration Foundation, and I'm honored to be here. And thank you for including the proclamation in your meeting today. And also thank you for being patient about myself. He's also Bellevue citizen.
Shall we get a picture?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve today's meeting agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are three pre-registered speakers this evening, so before I start calling names, I will go over some of the rules that the council has put in place for oral communications. It's for a time period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. Person speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, person speaking to items not on the agenda will be called. In both of those categories, the mayor is authorized to give priority to those who have not spoken to council in the last 60 days or who will speak about a topic that will come in front of the council in the next 60 days. Because we'll be allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Johnny Liu, I believe. Yes, is in person. Thank you.
I'm assuming this is on. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, council members. Hi, my name is Johnny Liu. I am a Bellevue resident. I grew up here. I went to Interlake High School here, and I wanted to speak to, or add a little flavor to the economic development update that you'll receive later today. So like I said, I grew up here, and after a brief stint in California, my wife and I decided to move back, return to Bellevue, set our roots here, and to hopefully build a business here. I lead strategy for a one-year-old Bellevue-based climate startup called Lithos Carbon. We work on carbon removal projects, and actually started my career at another Bellevue-based startup, Apptio, which is just over there on Eighth Street. Just directional sensor's off. And I really do think that startups are a really integral part of Bellevue's, I think, economic health, and I would love to see kind of more of that. Lithos Carbon was actually recently in the news. We received, we were featured by NPR and by Bloomberg because we were, we were able to win one of the largest climate carbon removal contracts in the industry right now. So we're going to have to grow, and we're going to have to grow relatively quickly. Up till now, and I'm going to give a quick shout out to the economic development team, up till now, we've been utilizing the startup 425 coworking spaces every month as a way for us to gather and work together. We found that working in person was really effective for us. It made us more efficient. And now we're actually in the process of looking for more permanent space here in downtown Bellevue. I've run into a bit of a wall with that. Things are, offices are either unaffordable, they're either really old, or they're not the right size for our team, which is roughly six people. They want us to lease three floors for our six employees or nothing at all. We often talk about with housing, this missing middle housing, and I think something we should consider is missing middle commercial as well. It's the sweet spot between retail and large office space that I think small startups like mine, as well as mid-sized companies, really thrive in. Bellevue has, I think, or downtown Bellevue has a over 30% commercial availability rate. It has three and a half million square feet under development. It's safe, it's transit friendly. There's all the right ingredients here for a thriving startup ecosystem. I think we just need to find the right recipe for it. And so on that note, I'll give two quick suggestions. One is regarding our comprehensive plan, I love to find ways to incentivize developers to not just build affordable spaces, but also spaces that cater to a variety of company sizes, not just the largest ones. The second suggestion is to increase the frequency of the startup 425 coworking space because I think especially smaller companies, they're missing a place for them to gather and work together. So I'd love to see that be more frequent, maybe bi-weekly. So in closing, my, my co-founder and I, Mary, we both are products and graduates of the excellent public education system right here in Bellevue. As we've built up the company, we've really dreamed about being able to build our business right here in our hometown, and I really appreciate the opportunity to make that dream a reality. So thank you, and go dogs.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Matthew Rill.
Hi, my name is Matthew Rill, and I'm a physician, an engineer, and a writer. It's a new year, a new city council, and a new city manager, so I'd like to propose a somewhat new idea for you, for Bellevue to create the position of city poet laureate. Now, yes, as I'm sure you all know, cities have poet laureates, and not just the Boston's and the Chicago's and the Philadelphias, but also the Bremertons, the Ellensbergs, and the Redmans. But what's the case for Bellevue to have a city poet laureate? One argument is the city poet laureate will fill a cultural art gap in our city, the spoken word, written, and the spoken and written word art gap, the gap for flexible and mobile art. You can't put the Pilote sculpture in this room next week. You could put a city poet laureate in this room. Another argument, perhaps a weaker one, is simply tradition. After the relationship between poets and cities has been going on for 4,000 years since the publication of the first ever book, The Epic of Gilgamesh. But I'll make the direct economic impact argument for a city poet laureate. Many of the businesses in this region need to continuously recruit, hire, and retain storytellers. And this isn't just the storytellers in supporting roles, the, the marketing and the communicating people. This is also the storytellers in the core business roles, the small startup entrepreneur as storyteller that we just heard from, the multi-billion dollar company's game designer as storyteller, the animal shelter fundraisers, fundraising executives as storytellers. Simply put, Bellevue having a poet, a city poet laureate shouts this out to the frothing marketplace of creatives from all backgrounds. We welcome you, you storytellers, to our city. So thank you very much, and thank you for all the service you have done and will be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. The final pre-registered speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman.
My name, Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about Agenda Number Six, Oral Communication. Allah Akbar, Nazi Gestapo fascist and antisemite. What is you did in Agenda Number Six? You want right now people will be registered from 12:00 p.m.? Yes. So from my understanding, you want what is more people will become and speak before, before you only from 5:00 to 6:00, right now from 12:00 to 6:00, from my understanding, maybe later too. How you explain this idiotic situation so only 10 people can speak for 30 minutes? Can you explain to me? And how you can do in this, you know what is mean? You want more people, but you never change your rules. Why your rules come only couple of year ago? You did this only for me, for Alex Zimmerman? Yes, exactly. You did this for many years. You cannot handle one poor Jew, you know what is mean? Who come and speak about something what is very important about United States Constitution, freedom of speech, open public meeting act? You are freaking Nazi pig. So how you, why you don't come back? I spoke for 30 years. So only few year ago, you charge this new rules. So 30 minutes, 10 people. You want more people will become? And this happened before. You stop and after 10 minutes? Why you don't come back like a Bellevue, normal city, what is I live here over more than 35 years? Who are you? Why you acting like a Nazi Gestapo rules always? You don't want what is people speak? And you stop and speak end of the meeting last year? Why? Why you don't want what is people, Bellevue's people can come and speak? Why? I'm candidate for Bellevue. Almost 20% is people vote for me. Thousand and thousand people, and nobody come here. Why? Because your Nazi rules. Then, nobody have this. Nobody. I speak in Masly Island, Isikua, Kirkland, Redman, Redman, nobody in the east size have this idiotic Nazi rules. Why? Only because Alex Zimmerman? I'm here. So what? You wait before I will be dead? No, maybe I not will be dead next Monday. Ah? You freaking Nazi pig. Stand up, America. We need clean this chamber from this fascist idiota, ahunta. Bye-bye.
That is the end of our pre-registered list, so at this point, we do have time remaining in oral communications. I'd ask if there's anyone joining us this evening. Ms. Johnson, I see you. If there's anyone else joining online who would like to speak, please raise your hand.
So I haven't had, Pamela Johnson, 3741, 122nd Avenue Northeast, and lots of traffic, and taking kids to basketball. But anyway, I'm here to talk to you about making the citizenship and the staff and council direction more easier to get to. And so I've given you an article that she has, and it's basically about incrementalism. So one of the things that Loretta Lopez said is, I really hated the fact that they were going to do Bell Red and all that dizziness. Now I might move there when I get older. So it's as people's things change, their life plans change too. But it's also, if things just change automatically, people get really upset if it's like really quick. But if they get a chance to get used to it bit by bit, then it brings them to a place where they can accept this bit and accept this bit. And I think another part of that is, is that as each bit comes and it's accepted or compromised with, then you know that you have a good relationship between the city and its people because you can start to count on them that every single minor step worked. So bigger steps may be in later time, but they'll be different people then. So usually, it's incremental steps work the best. Okay, thank you. Somebody's phone? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I do not see any additional hands raised, so that would close oral communications.
Okay, thank you. So next up, we have the report of our city manager, and you have two items here. Ms. Carlson, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. And before we get to our first item, I have a slight, very small unscheduled announcement, and that's with the potential for wind and weather this week. We do want to remind our public that, to check our website for up-to-date road conditions and other services. Our city staff is preparing to respond to the conditions, depending on what they are. And then we also had a winter weather preparedness presentation to the council on November 6th that is available if people want to go back and take a look at that for more information. Thanks. And now to our first scheduled item. This report is informational for the council and for the public on improvements to the timing of oral communications registration, as well as video recordings of boards and commission meetings. And our city clerk, Charmaine Aradanda, will be providing the information. Charmaine?
Thank you, city manager Carlson, and mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. Happy to be here tonight to talk about a couple of improvements that the city clerk's office has been working on, as city manager said, with regard to oral communication, the registration process, and the recording of board and commission meetings. So staff originally implemented the electronic registration for oral communications and public hearings in 2019. Since that time, a few things have impacted the opening time of the form. The most significant of those was COVID, when we were forced to go to 100% remote meetings for approximately two years. After the COVID restrictions were lifted, the council returned to meetings in person, and we continue to allow folks to participate remotely as well via Zoom. At that time, the form did revert back to a 5:00 p.m. opening, so one hour prior to the council meeting, and it continues that way through current day. So as we've been looking into improvements of this registration process, we've taken feedback from community members. We've also had conversations with other jurisdictions and looked at other ways to, to gather engagement from the community. I'm pleased to announce that at the beginning of the February 5th council meeting, the registration form will now be changing to a noon opening. So this does allow additional time for individuals to register, and also, from a staff perspective, also allows us additional time to do that prioritization of speakers that the council rules calls for. So that will be in place at the start of the February 5th meeting. It'll be a pilot project, and if successful, we will push that to our boards and commissions to ensure consistency from a user perspective and from the public perspective. Also, just as a reminder, much like happened this evening, if there is additional time for oral communications, we always call for additional speakers, so preregistration is not a requirement to speak to the council during oral communications or during public hearings. So that's it on that topic. And then really quickly, And then, really quickly, moving on to our other update. The clerk's office understands the value of full participation from the public, not only in the council meetings, but also in our board and commission meetings. So, therefore, as part of our work plan in 2023, we partnered with the IT department and the staff liaisons that house each of the board and commissions to push forward and facilitate the recording of board and commission meetings in Zoom. So, I'm pleased to announce that, beginning this week, in fact, the board and commission meetings will be recorded in Zoom and will be available in Legisdar. Hopefully, within 48 hours is what we're shooting for right now, post-meeting. So, it will be found on the same page that the council meetings are found. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I think if you have any comments or questions, we can contact Charmaine. So, moving on, next, we have the consent calendar.
Is there a motion? Sorry, Mayor. Excuse me, Mayor.
I thought there was another one.
There's one more. I'm sorry. Very quick, also.
Thought maybe I missed something.
And this report also will be presented by City Clerk Arredondo, and it's to introduce a proposal to change city council meeting day and the frequency. This is informational tonight, and our intent is to come back with a study session, but we wanted to get it in front of the council and the public now for, just for awareness. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Charmaine.
Great, thank you. As City Manager said, this was a proposal that was floated out to the council by our former city manager last year. The topic came up at the council retreat, and it's related to changing the day of the meetings from Monday to Tuesday, and then setting a standard frequency of council meetings. The proposal wasn't advanced last year due to a conflict of a sitting council member at the time, but we are bringing this back to highlight for the public in the council that that conflict no longer exists, and we will be coming back with a study session because making this type of adjustment will require a code change, and it will also require a council rules change. And there are also several internal processes that will need to be adjusted based on how we, how we get the work done to prepare for the council meetings. So, given all of that, we are suggesting that we have a delayed implementation if the council chooses to move forward with this proposal. Right now, the next step is just taking feedback from the council, and as City Manager highlighted, we will be bringing this forward in a full study session for full discussion and direction from the council, likely at your February 5th or February 12th meeting. And with that, I've done entirely too much talking tonight, and we'll turn it back to you.
And again, any comments or questions on that topic as well? Go to Charmaine. So, with that, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve our consent calendar. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have two study session items tonight. City Manager, could you please introduce them?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This first study session is an update on the city's ongoing economic development work, and these are quarterly updates that you receive, and they're presented to council several times a year, and it's been a while, so this is timely tonight. This is informational, and no direction is being asked of the council. Joining for the presentation from the Community Development Department are Jesse Canedo, Chief Economic Development Officer, and Corbin Hart, the Business Development Manager. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Canedo.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. It's been a while since we've been here in person, so we're looking forward to tonight's presentation. As the City Manager said, it's information only, but as always, we will look forward to the questions and feedback at the end of the presentation. Just a note, so tonight, we're talking a little bit more about the high-level macro pieces. A lot of the data and quantitative pieces are found in the memo in the packet, so if you're looking for some of the tables or specific numbers, those are often in the memo packet, but we're happy to take those questions as well. Corbin, walk us to the agenda.
Thank you. So, as Jesse led us in a little bit, we're going to start tonight off with a little bit of an overview of Bellevue's economic development plan, some of our current economics statistics, and sort of the economic market as it is in Bellevue right now. And then, we'll dive a little bit deeper into some specific items, including business retention, expansion, attraction, tourism, small business, entrepreneurship, Grand Connection, the workforce development program, and last but not least, our creative economy in the arts.
And so, just to re-center us, the work of economic development is a citywide, one-city effort. The work of transportation, utilities, fire, all support the quality of life, quality of place, and broad economic development goals for the city. The work of cultural and economic development focuses more specifically on the direct efforts that lead to stronger and more diverse economic activity and business growth. The chart on the screen is the six focus areas of the current 2020 economic development plan, focused on tourism, retail, the creative economy, workforce, entrepreneurship, and capacity building for public private partnerships. And it's been a really good plan. The council had the fortune of starting this work in 2019 before the pandemic set in, and this plan has helped us be several steps ahead in the post-pandemic era as we retool our economy and make sure that we continue to be a place where people want to be from around the world. But as always, plans need a little bit of updating. So, over the next set of quarterly updates, we'll be providing the council progress reports on how it's going, implementing the 2020 plan, getting some initial feedback, and most likely recommending some updates or launching an update process at the end of the year so that we can make sure that we have the next five-year plan so we continue to stay ahead of the economy. And the economic development plan supports Bellevue's economic position, making sure that we build from our assets and strategically close gaps where it makes sense. Bellevue continues to be the second-largest business center in Washington State, but we are, and it's easy to forget sometimes, we are only 36 square miles within our larger King County and Puget Sound area, which means we have to focus very specifically on niches where Bellevue has strengths and capacity. Often, we'll get questions about, well, can't you find a space for that company? Can you just squeeze them in over there? And we, as we know, Bellevue does not have space for all of these places. We continue to redevelop and urbanize and become a pedestrian-oriented community. So, we work with our partners in Kent, Everett, Tacoma, for those companies that we can't find space for here in Bellevue. For example, at some point, SpaceX or Blue Origin may need space to build their next rocket production facility, and unless we're going to fill in Maidenbauer Bay, we probably can't fit them here in Bellevue. So, that's the kind of project where we would work with our regional partners so that we have a diversified regional economy that also benefits Bellevue. The level of amenities that the city has put in place over the last 70 years have helped make sure that Bellevue's come out strong from the pandemic and the work-from-home era. But even our strong retail positioning, our strong visitor economy, our faith will face increasing competition as our partner cities across the region continue to grow. Woodinville is working with private developers to put in place Harvest, which will be a wonderful wine-focused visitor destination, and Point Ruston down in Tacoma is giving folks in South King County and in Pierce County wonderful reasons to stay closer to home. So, the work of the next ED plan will make sure that we continue to reinforce Bellevue's niches and make Bellevue a unique place. One important area to note, as we are in emerging education hub, Bellevue College does a fantastic job as the largest open enrollment institution in our state. Looking forward to 2044 and beyond, the region, the larger region, has a continuing deficit in higher education completions, particularly in areas that are important for Bellevue, like software development, life sciences, and advanced manufacturing. So, we have taken on a consultant that's doing some quantitative analysis for Bellevue compared to peer regions across the country in those STEM areas, and so that information will also be part of the upcoming quarterly reports and conversations that would lead to possible recommendations on the next economic development plan. And with that, Corbin will walk us through some of the data.
Thank you, Jesse. So, as we laid out a little bit earlier, as a general summary for where we are in the market right now, we're seeing a lot of impacts from macroeconomic factors. You hear about interest rates, inflation. We're seeing a lot of those impacts from our smallest businesses all the way up to our major employers. So, that's been a real trend over the past six months to a year. However, as we go through some of these specific work streams, you're going to see a lot of implementation and forward movement among those specific bucket areas Jesse laid out earlier in the economic development plan section of the presentation. Specifically, we have a lot of exciting progress in the placemaking arts and entrepreneurship areas. And broadly, we want to, you know, highlight that we do have some good signs of, you know, green growth and recovery as we go into 2024 and some increased growth despite a lot of the macroeconomic headwinds we've been mentioning. So, diving in a little bit more specifically on the business retention, expansion, traction front, this is really our employment in our, a lot of our mid-sized to larger employers. In downtown, we're actually seeing a lot of office demand increasing in late 2023. Broadly, as you may or may not be aware, commercial office has seen a lot of headwinds resulting from hybrid work, COVID, a lot of decreasing office demands. However, we've seen a lot of really hopeful signs in the past three months. We've actually got, according to our last check, about a million square feet of pending leases in downtown, which is a really good sign and demand we haven't seen in the market in a long time. That being said, it is a mixed bag. As we specifically look at East Gate, we're seeing a lot more vacancy in that submarket, a lot of more suburban office stock that is less in demand in the current market. So, we're seeing a lot more difficulty there, and some developers taking some interesting and different looks at their properties, which include redevelopment into residential for some office properties, and some people looking at those specific sites. On the business attraction front, we're seeing a lot of international activity, which is great. We're seeing inbound activity from Europe and Asian markets, which is great. And then, just finally rounding it out, we are still seeing some of those ongoing layoffs resulting from the macroeconomic environment, and specifically expansions from companies such as Robinhood, Lumen, and GE, who actually all in the last quarter opened up new offices within Bellevue. So, some, some great new companies that we're excited to welcome to our Bellevue business community here. And going from there, we'll move into tourism. So, our bellhop visitor, visitor circulator, circulator pilot program that's run by Visit Bellevue has been exceeding its ridership goals, so we're really excited about that. And it's, the pilot has been extended through May. On some specific event fronts, we have the Old Bellevue Wine Walk, which a couple months ago sold over 900 tickets. It was one of their biggest ever, it was their biggest ever, I should say. And actually, a couple days ago, they had the New Year's Eve Night Market in Old Bellevue, which had over 6,000 attendees. So, really great interest and traction on events as we round out 2023. And finally, I'll just direct you to that table at the bottom there, highlighting some good growth year over year for a lot of our tourism metrics, reaching half a billion dollars in visitor spending. And on the small business and entrepreneurship front, Startup 425 Administration shifted to Bellevue in mid-2023. This is a five-city eastside partnership for, to promote entrepreneurship among both startups and small businesses. We've done a combination of in-person panels where people will speak about their founder experience or about specific subject matter areas. We've also been hosting coworking events where people will come in and just work together over the course of a day. Here in City Hall, we've also been hosting them in other cities across the east side, and in probably the fastest response to a resident request from public comment. I can't say we are, increasing the number of coworkings we'll be hosting. So, some great response off the bat there. And finally, on the small business front, we're doing a lot of outreach via small business walks, and then obviously inbound requests from small businesses. And a lot of what we're seeing are requests focused on access to capital due to the macroeconomic environment right now, and technical business planning, which luckily, we have a free one-on-one business advisor who can help walk people through that. Onto Grand Connection work. So, right now, the Grand Connection crossing work is on track for a December 2024 completion of the 30% design milestone. Some really good forward movement there. And the public space management work is ongoing across the corridor, and really what that means is anything from single-person busking all the way up to the 6,000 attendee night market I mentioned earlier, and everything in between, just really making the corridor an active and alive experience. And then, I'll hand it off to Jesse if he has anything more to add on Grand Connection.
On that one, I just wanted to take a second to make a quick note, because I know the council gets contacted quite frequently by residents and business owners who want to do incredible events and public activities here in Bellevue. And so, you will start to see some of the improvements deploy throughout the year. It's just a very complex system. We have some wonderful, some wonderful code and other processes that have been in place for sometimes 10, 20 years that did not keep pace with the city's quick growth. So, and oftentimes, this happens when you're building something fresh, you've optimized the right-of-way, we're optimizing land use code, but for the special events piece, we're just now getting to the process of optimizing it for the Bellevue of today. And so, there's a lot of learning that we've had to do over the last year, so that's why the work may not have happened as quickly as the council or some of our stakeholders would have liked, but some of those updates will start to deploy this year, and more will come in 2025 as we continue to build that out.
Thank you. So, moving on to workforce development, we wanted to highlight some elements of this ongoing pilot program that we've been doing. So, first one we wanted to highlight is partnership with Bellevue College and Mentors in Tech. Mentors in Tech is a program that provides in-industry mentors to students who are going through computer science degrees with, or tech-focused degrees. And so, this is actually the first year this will take place at Bellevue College, so we're really excited about that. Very well-regarded program in Mentors in Tech, and this is actually one of the first programs that will include a micro internship component with an employer role. They were, were, excuse me, where they will get a six-to-12-week internship experience as a part of that. We also wanted to highlight our career assistance program, which has served almost 100 residents so far, and we're seeing a lot more, as the program started, is focused on a lot of COVID-related dislocations, and now, we're seeing a lot more residents who have been impacted by tech industry layoffs. So, helping them get to upskilling resources, seeing how they can address their next step in their career. And we're actually seeing a lot of overlap between the workforce development program and the entrepreneurship program, actually, because a lot of people, they might not want the next job, they might want to start something new themselves. And so, we're seeing a lot of overlap and great synergy between those two programs. And finally, as Jesse mentioned, just wanted to highlight that higher education capacity gap as we look to continue to attract great employers and build great employers. Talent is consistently one of our strongest selling points, and we want to make sure that remains the case. And finally, last but not least, wanted to talk about creative economy in the arts. So, we recently completed, as you might have heard, the Arts and Economic Prosperity, Economic Impact Study. Just wanted to highlight one statistic out of that of $49 per person per night of spending, which is the highest among peer communities, and that's putting aside hotel rooms and ticket revenues. And just wanted to tie that in directly with a local organization, Theater 33, who recently opened up their theater in Bell Red, and it's clear the cultural vibrancy a lot of those organizations provide, but it's also, we also want to highlight the economic vibrancy that these organizations provide to our community. Total economic activity of about 54 million resulted in Bellevue resulting from these sets of organizations. And then, I'll hand it off to Jesse to round us out.
All right, and we'll round out, as always, with the look ahead. So, lots of continuing work to help make sure Bellevue continues to be the place where you want to be. Over the next year, we'll be bringing the council some updates at different times, including some information on tax increment financing, which is a new finance tool that was enabled by the legislature last year. It is a district-based financing tool based on a similar tool used in about 48 other states. It's really district-focused. The goal is to get the growth happening in a specific neighborhood to help fund the future infrastructure, parks, roads, grand connections for those specific neighborhoods. So, it's a very, very strategic tool that we'll be bringing the council some information on. We will have updates on the findings from our retail study, which we did over the course of the last year. The information and the learning has also been shared with our long-range planning and development services team, so they're able to integrate some of that learning proactively into the conversations about the comprehensive plan, Wilburton and Bell Red. We'll also be bringing forward the results of the 2023 business survey. Spoiler, we're doing very well. In fact, one of the numbers I'll share tonight is that 92% of the respondents say that Bellevue has a better economy than the rest of our region. has a better economy than the rest of our region. So very, very high marks. We'll have more details the next time. We'll also be bringing the council information on our first-ever cultural facilities grants. And so those will be larger capital grants focused on our institutions like Kids Quest, Theater 33, TaskVeer, organizations that have a physical space because we want to make sure that Bellevue continues to have venues where our community can come together for performance, for creative, for artistry, all of those pieces. So we'll be bringing more information to the council on that. And then, as we said at the beginning, information on possible updates to the Economic Development Plan and the Destination Development Plan. So Visit Bellevue, our destination marketing organization, leads the work on the destination marketing plan, but that work was done in 2017. So it is about time that we updated that. So Brad Jones will be working with us very closely as we look at, start watching that process at the end of the year. So with that, we will open up for your questions and feedback.
Well, thank you so much for this presentation. And Corbin, welcome to Bellevue. I know you've been here a while, but I think it's your first time presenting in council chambers, so glad to have you.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Let's start with Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm really happy to see we are doing very well, the city itself in economic development. And I think you guys had a real challenge, you know, to recover from the pandemic, so I want to give you kudos for reacting so well and it looks great. As you know, economic development is number one for the city. We listed as number one on top of all the priorities the city has. And to me, you know, that's probably the most important thing that because without a healthy economy in economic development, we're not going to have resources, we're not going to have the people coming, we're not going to have, you know, residents living here. And so I really think it's very important. So, so thanks for what you have done. But we've seen a number of things. One thing I want to notice is that there's still a lot of things to do in the future. And I want to know what kind of strategy, what kind of proactive strategy that we are put down to attract the things that, that we know may be happening, but we want to make sure it does. We have to do that, obviously, through partnership because our staff is limited, you know, we can only do so much at the local level. One of the things you mentioned, the incremental financing, tax financing, it happened because we're partners with the PSRC EDD Board, and that's an issue we pushed very hard, including myself, to the state legislature. And we got it because of the state of Washington, we are hand-packed, we cannot have that lending credit, but we are able to do that. So I think we need to take advantage of that now it's available. But there are other things that may be also available or may not, may not be available, but the thing is necessary strategically, we need to have a strategize, we need to have a plan, how we can get it happen. So I think this is something that I see that we probably need to do more. We heard today, you know, two speakers, I was very impressed. One is about startup. Startup 425 was suggested, they look for working space. We have tough times having space working. So what are we doing? What can we do to provide more working space? You mentioned a few ideas, office spaces kind of vacancies higher, so what can we do to strategically to make it available? The other ones, I really am excited about that gentleman talking about poet laureate. That's great, wonderful statement ideas. And I think these are the forward-looking things we need to do more of. I know it's tough because you have so many departments that you have to work with, but I think the departments are working very well. We need to be making sure we have strategy that they can work on, but we need to develop our own. So this is what I'm going to just say limited here, but I hope to looking forward to working with you, the city council. The final one is, I noticed that you talk about this Theater 33. Lot of things you're doing, council members don't know that. I wasn't aware, I was surprised to see that. You know, that's wow, where they come from, you know? So I would like to make sure you recognize city council members in our position on many, many other places we can help you to build that partnership and build that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Thanks.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. Well, you know, I, I love this robust economic development plan. I think that it hits all these different elements and they all matter. And I'm especially excited about the Looking Ahead list and all of the items in there and how we continue to put ourselves out there as the economic development on the east side and really around the state. A couple of thoughts and then a couple of questions. So on the thoughts one, I am excited to hear about the million square feet of pending leases. I think that's going to be a huge piece to continue to, to press on that and helping businesses with access to capital. And then on the grand connection, I just, again, want to just encourage early contractor engagement. I'm concerned about waiting until 30% design before we bring somebody on because I think a lot of the value engineering and creativity and innovation can happen well before 30% if we can bring someone on earlier, even though that may not be the norm for our city. And I think there's lots of resources available to help with that. So just wanted to put that out there. And then here are my questions or the thoughts. One is, just like they were talking about with startup and all different sizes, I guess the question I'm wondering is, because we have so much vacancy space, are we partnering with development services on the tenant improvement and being able to streamline the permitting for that? Because I think that will go a long ways towards maybe helping those tenants that want to move in and have some, you know, tenant improvement needs. And that may help us to be a bit of a boost to them because the sooner they can get in and, and be profitable, I think the better off they are. So that's a partnership I wonder about. The one about the cultural facilities grants, and I was thinking about the special events and the cross-cultural center. I wonder, is that a partnership with Linda Whitehead and the DEI Group? Because it seems like if we're talking about cultural facilities, that that partnership seems like something that we could be thinking about. And then lastly, just kind of an overall comment about who are the other grants and partners we might be looking at? And do we have the staff resources to pursue grants that may be available, especially to help the very small micro businesses? Because, you know, they have so many needs and they're not all the same. And so how we actually give them that, that hand-holding and special attention? So those were a couple of my questions.
Yes, happy to address those, Councilmembers on. So first, I'll start with your thoughts on alternative delivery methods for Grand Connection Crossing. And Maher is very excited about those opportunities and he is keeping an eye on that. So we'll make sure that that is part of a future update. With regards to the vacancy rate and possible tenant improvement streamlining work, yes, so we're, we're in conversations and we work very closely with Rebecca Horner, Greg Schrader, and Listad on those kinds of questions. We are looking at some different opportunities for some programs that might provide some streamlining in the future. But as Corbin mentioned, or he can go into a little bit more detail, part of the issue is just the pipeline of demand for space. There's a lot of companies that are still signing leases, but they're much smaller. So one of the big, one of the bigger issues is creating more of a lead generation work so that we can have companies that would take advantage of a future possible tenant improvement project. Corbin, you want to mention anything there?
Yeah, just a little bit more on that front right now. And there are a couple outliers, but a lot, right now, a lot of the demand we're seeing is for mid-sized leases, so anywhere from 5,000 to 20,000 square feet. And because of the nature of how commercial office leasing works a lot of the time, a lot of times, property owners like to lease out entire blocks of floors or be really, in an ideal world, get the largest lease or most consistent tenant. So sometimes that leads to some situations where you might have large amounts of vacancy in the market and demand in the market, but those don't exactly match up due to some specific circumstances. And so one thing we're working on is how do we help handhold some of those companies to maybe opportunities they might have not, not have known about or help them navigate the market a little bit better.
So we're also working with Development Services and some of the property owners on some other opportunities, like one of the larger office buildings in downtown that's majority vacant, is going to do some proactive demoing to make sure the space is ready and easier to build out the tenant improvements when the time comes. So we will continue to look for opportunities to make that faster and easier. And with regards to the cultural facilities grants, yes, so we have worked very closely with the Diversity Advantage Team and Dr. Whitehead. The arts team that does the annual grants actually helped advise Dr. Whitehead's team on how to make sure that, how to put those forward in the best way possible. So we're looking for opportunities to continue to partner with the cross-cultural center work as we, as we build out both our cultural facilities work and then also our arts grants to the community. And with regards to other partners and growth opportunities and grants that might support small business, Corbin, do you have something?
Yeah, we can, I can speak to that a little bit. We work closely with a bunch of different partners who may be providing small business grants, access to credit and capital, like we talked about during the presentation. One of those big partners is the state of Washington. So they, the Commerce Department still, every once in a while does, they, there are different rounds of the Working Washington Grant Program. And so when those come up, we make sure to let our micro businesses and small businesses know about that and be plugged into the opportunity, helping them apply for that sort of thing as well. We're also working with the state, and it's been a little bit of a slow rollout, but we're really excited for it on, it's called the SSBCI Program, so Small Business Credit Initiative, I believe, is the acronym there. And that will be a pretty large credit program for small businesses from the state level that we're hopeful will provide a lot more access to alternative methods of financing, so revenue-based loans, loan guarantees, that sort of thing for some of those small businesses that don't have access to traditional capital.
That's great. Thank you for being a, doing a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Newenhaus.
Thank you. Great presentation, Jesse Corbin. Appreciate the update. A couple of questions. And first, want to just thank Elena Morris with Ascend Hospitality Group for really driving the night market experience. It was great the first year they did it, but obviously the second year was 6,000 attendees. It was amazing. It was even difficult to get around. And in fact, the, the most often heard phrase was, is this it? Is there more? Can we get more next year and, and build this even in further? So it was just great to see. So I want to give her kudos as well as Amazon, who sponsored that as well. So they really drove such a, such a great event for the city and all the residents that are looking for more events like that. Jesse, I wanted to follow up on your comment regarding just the process of special events in our city and an improvement there. Can you be a little bit, a little bit more detailed in terms, what's that going to look like to someone who wants to do an event in Bellevue? Does that mean the process is going to be easier, faster, more intuitive? How quickly do we turn around these applications as they are currently submitted now? And what will that look like in the future? I'll give you a few other questions here now and then let you, let you respond. So that was one question. Other question, I mean, it was for Corbin. So on the, on the office demand, so what you're seeing is mid-sized companies, a smaller amount of office space being leased out, I guess, to smaller companies, but also you're, you're mentioning here that you're seeing office demand increase. So is it increased just in the smaller amounts or overall? And what's driving that demand? Certainly, that has cooled off considerably, although getting better. But I'm just curious as to what is driving that now, especially kind of here in the late 2023. And then looking ahead, so I noticed there wasn't anything there related to the creative economy. So I'd like to get some details as well in terms of what we're doing to further move the creative economy forward. I appreciate the, the update on Theater 33 and, and also a few other bullets there. But what else are we doing driving that economy forward in our city where residents are craving more art experiences and performances and poetry, as I guess we heard earlier as well? So would like to hear a little bit more detail on that. Thank you.
Of course. So let's tackle special events. So of course, the, the goal will be for it to be more intuitive, to be speedier and to just enable more events, particularly in areas outside of downtown as well. So part of it is related specifically to the Grand Connection work, but part of it is also enabling neighborhood events, neighborhood festivals, those kinds of things in the future. I like to describe the work as for special events, we have a wonderful process in place, especially for the larger events, for our Fourth of July celebrations, those types of things. The city has a wonderful special events team that's chaired by Parks that has that. All of the, the folks that need to be consulting on traffic, on safety, on all of those things are really deeply engaged in that. It's for some of the more medium-sized events, more of the Old Bellevue Wine Walks, the neighborhood festivals, those kinds of things where there's just some updating we have to do. And I like to describe it as, it's a house that we built over time, and so we wired each room individually, and now we're going back and like, well, that switch is connected to that plug and that plug is connected to that fan. How do we make all of this, how do we sync this up so it's more streamlined for the, the user? So there will be some new application guides that'll be coming out later this year. I think the first one is ready to be deployed. And then a couple of other ones for outdoor tables, for neighborhood lighting, those types of things that will make it easier for, it's taken from the applicant guy, the applicant perspective instead of the permit pathway perspective. So it'll be more intuitive for the resident or the applicant. We're looking at some different software tools that might make it even more intuitive for a whole host of special event permitting. And then we're also looking at some things that might be able to be cleaned up as we implement the curb management plan, implement the Wilburton work, things that'll make it just a little bit easier than some of our other neighborhoods. So it's a, it's a host of things that we'll be back with more information on later in the year. And so this, I would offer the same answer, Councilmember Newenhaus, on the creative economy. So the creative economy will be one of the topics for one of our future quarterly updates as part of the ED Plan conversation.
Yeah. And as for the, the office market right now, I think really what's driving demand right now is what has always driven demand within Bellevue is our amazing workforce, business-friendly environment, and just generally high quality of life. So I, I don't think those things have changed, but what you're seeing in the market right now is when companies are looking for space, they're looking for very high-quality space, so Class A, A-plus space, and they are looking for a smaller amount of it. So we, for instance, with, currently in the market, have probably a similar number of companies looking in the market as we did probably in mid-2021, for instance, or even further back potentially. But those tenants are looking for smaller, about 75 to 50% of the space they would have looked for a couple of years ago. So those demands are lower. That being said, the statistics are thrown off a little bit. There are some outliers in the market who are looking for large amounts of space. So it's been reported, I believe, Pokemon is looking for a large amount of space and TikTok as well. And so those are, are some pretty large demands that are throwing off those statistics a little bit, but broadly, it's the same amount of companies looking for a smaller amount of space.
And one, just one quick follow-up question, if I, if I can, Mayor. Do you provide language services or any additional equitable tools for those that their language not, their first language might not be English when applying for special events in the city?
Yes, those services are available for anybody who's applying, who needs them. Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. Very good conversation so far. I want to follow up on a couple of things and really appreciate, you know, talking about the economic development plan. And we've, we've had, as Councilmember Lee said, you know, we're going to have a, and you've mentioned, we're going to have a briefing on that because the last time we did, it's really been great growth and everything. So we're, we're still on that upward path. So that's great. The, the one thing I'm really interested in, I'm glad Councilmember Newenberg, Newenhaus talked about the creative economy also. We're, again, seeing that is very important. Wanted to point out, it was interesting, if you've read it, a couple of days ago in Seattle Times, there was a comment by one of their columnists about and criticizing Seattle on its business stumbles and noted and other, other things working in the city and noted that Bellevue, in contrast, works positively with businesses and very successfully and with community development and culture. And I thought that was really, really nice to hear that. And, you know, the other factor that I'm really interested in, of course, we've talked about this a lot, is the, the whole concept of the creative economy. about this a lot, is the, the whole concept of the creative economy. So I think we're on, we're on a really good path. And these are, these are so many things that are going in this different direction and all. And what is, I think, when I look at this, it is, you've done a really great job of pulling all this together and how it works together because it's easy to get off on this tangent and that tangent, and they're all related. And the work that, and reading the material you've put together, I think it's, you're going forward at really good progress, laying this out. And I do also appreciate your comments about, particularly with the Grand Connection, but other things is, I think we're in a phase of how can we do things, great things better and quicker than we used to do? Instead of taking three, four, five years to do something, we maybe do it in two years or three years. And I think that's, I think we've really improved on that. And it's going to take both staff and council to accomplish that, but I appreciate the progress on it. And the last thing I want to say was, yeah, I did appreciate Councilmember Zahn's comments about the, you know, speeding up the Grand Connection piece itself. But very, very good work and really appreciate it, and I'm excited about how we're going forward. And this is all going to tie into our whole, you know, new comprehensive plan work too. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Just going to kind of follow on that comment, too. I think it's really helpful to have this update now since we are looking at the comprehensive plan update coming next year. And then to follow up with looking back and updating the destination development plan and economic development plan at the end of next year, seems like that timing is really good. Appreciate the presentation for sure and all the work that you do to make sure that Bellevue is a business-friendly and economically thriving community. So that is great. I noticed in the memo, you talked about increasing workforce housing and transportation connectivity in the Puget Sound region is key to addressing workforce shortages long-term. And I really am glad that we're focusing on that. And again, as it relates to the comp plan update work, that's really going to be important. Talking, too, about the arts work and the arts district, really good. I think the Theater 33 opening was really a positive and was glad to be a part of that. And the Grand Connection as well, you know, a lot of momentum building there. So I'm glad we're focusing on that. I was a part of the group along with the mayor and Councilmember Newenhouse that went to DC, and that was one of the hot topics there. And we talked a lot about it and really made sure that our DC delegation knew that this, the project was really gaining momentum and that we plan to come back and see what they can do to help support it. So I think that was great. Just a couple of questions. We talked about, or you mentioned that mentors in tech. And I'm just kind of curious, and you can follow up if you don't have this, but, you know, how many people we think are going to be served? I think it said in there that we had contributed about 20,000 to the effort. Just kind of curious how many Bellevue residents might be able to take advantage of that?
Great question. Also, this is a pilot project. This is the first year that Bellevue College has hosted mentors in tech because of our work with them. So this pilot project will, will sponsor 20 students for the first year, and will work with the, the college and mentors in tech program to see if there are opportunities to scale that in the future.
Okay, great. Also, too, that was mentioned, some international business attraction sources. And I'm just wondering if you could explain that a little bit? Do we have certain ways that we go about that? And are some more effective than others? Or could you just talk about that for a minute?
Yeah, for sure. So that happens through a couple of different methods. The primary one is we have a pretty long, ongoing partner in Greater Seattle Partners, which is the regional business attraction organization. They serve King, Pierce, Nahomish, and I believe now Kitsap County in really marketing our region to both domestic economic development, but there, where they've been really strong recently is international business attraction. So I believe in the last year or so, we've had actually two companies come in internationally from them, Jobbly, which is a Japanese firm, and Chargepally, which is a French company related to electric vehicle charging. So they've been a great partner in representing Bellevue and our wider region internationally. And we're also a very international community. So we will have people reach out out of the blue, residents who have a friend or a family member who is interested in doing business, a lot of sort of those organic connections that develop. And then additionally, any partnerships through foreign governments who have, who are in the region, specifically through their consulates who are, that are here within the region. Anything to add to that?
The only other thing I would add is that Bellevue, it continues to surprise even me after all these years in the work. Bellevue is really well-known and its prominence is growing internationally. So we learned recently, and we'll have more information in the future, but we learned recently about a project that's actually going to be sponsoring a, a new build of a business here in Bellevue that's sponsored by a foreign government, very friendly foreign government. So it'll be more on the cultural attraction side. And that's because the, the ministry back in the home country knew about Bellevue because of historic ties, a lot of work that the city has done over the years with that country. So our, our star is very strong right now. And so that leads to a lot of organic lead generation.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then you mentioned as well that we have a way above average event spending. And I'm just wondering if you could talk about that? Why, why do we do so well? And, you know, maybe how can we even do more?
Yeah. So a lot of that is related to, you know, when we talk about in amenity-rich community, that's sort of the, the business development speak for, we have great restaurants, we have great retailers, we have a really great invite, really great experiences people can, can do and take part in here in Bellevue. And so really what that means is when people come into Bellevue for a specific event or reason, they have a lot of other things to stay around and do, whether that's a great restaurant, whether that's a great retailer to go to, or a great park to visit, so on and so forth. So that's really what generates that. It's keeping people in longer than just that what their ticket is admitted for. Anything you add to that?
That's good.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Great comments. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, both of you. Great job, great presentation, but also great work that your team and you do. That is really amazing progress that we have, especially considering our current environment, globally, internationally, even locally. Bellevue is performing amazing, and that's such a great news. So kudos to you all and kudos to the city of Bellevue. The night market was great. My only complaint is the supply and demand of hot chocolate were not matching. So if we can do that for the next year, that would be great. You mentioned workforce development and workforce shortage. And I was wondering, how can we, instead of having the mismatch, like people are getting laid off, but we also, in many of the other sectors and businesses, we have a shortage of workforce? How can we connect them together by some, as you mentioned, upskilling, re-skilling, training? I don't believe we need for anything four-years degree anymore. We can partnering with these institutes and businesses, and we create short courses, and we can train people for the future workforce needs. The only caveat is that's such a dynamic and fast pace, and it doesn't really match with our speed in the city. So I would love to hear in future, how can we fill that gap and be a good partner to our workforce, train them for the future workforce needs that the city has right now? That's one comment I have. And then the last comment is, we heard a lot today and in general, and you also mentioned, how can we, what are the strategies that we can implement that we diversify Bellevue employer base? We are heavy in some sectors and we are not at all heavy. How can we diversify? I know you're doing a great job in life sciences and others, but how can we actively invest in that diversification, I think would be great. These are all thoughts. There is no need to respond, just fruitful thoughts for later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If you have a response, I'd like to hear it.
We can, we can. So with the workforce part, and Corbin can add in a second, that is part of the work that our workforce development specialist does with the upskilling, the reskilling. One of our core focuses is work-based learning and work-based learning, up, upskilling opportunities. So as Corbin and his team engage through our business retention work with our various employers, understanding what are your skill set needs, how might there be, might there be an existing program out there that we can connect you with? It's real about, a lot about bringing the ecosystem together and not creating new things because there's a lot of great programs that are doing upskilling work in the region already.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great synopsis of it. A lot of it is a focus on work-based learning and also the knowledge that a lot, you know, a lot of our very large employers have dedicated workforce development pipelines and that focus. As you start to get down the employment count, a lot of our mid-sized employers, and, and these are, when I say mid-sized employers, these are still large companies, but they may not have the human resources infrastructure that running an internship program might need. So really focusing on how we can help those mid-sized and smaller employers build more work-based learning opportunities.
And then with regards to the diversification, and you mentioned life sciences, that's actually one of the areas where Bellevue could have a strong competitive advantage in the future. And so part of it is, it's a multi-pronged approach. Some of it is working with groups like Greater Seattle Partners and some of the industry associations to make sure that they understand the opportunities that exist in Bellevue already. Some of our existing office buildings could be repurposed or converted to something other than software. And part of it is working on the new developments. So we've worked with Development Services Group and Planning, as we're talking about Wilburton, the Comprehensive Plan, and BellRed, on what are the needs of those other sectors? And how do we make sure that the future code will enable those types of developments that will house that kind of work? And then one part I'll note, because it was part of the presentation, is that East Gate is also a future opportunity. It has a relatively high vacancy rate. And so Development Services, Economic Development Planning are talking about what might that neighborhood be able to support in the future in terms of employment? Because we know that the high vacancy rate means that those offices will be primed for redevelopment at some point in the future.
Thank you. Great.
Really good conversation. I did appreciate what our public commenter Johnny Lou brought up with a missing middle office space and trying to get that variety of sizes. I think that's interesting. I've always thought about how all, every large building has odd office space that can never get leased, and it'd be so interesting to get an inventory of all those and, and manage that, share it with the people who are looking for space like that. So we talked about how successful the Wine Walk was in Old Bellevue and how successful the Night Market was in Old Bellevue. And I think that neighborhood is probably one of the most successful neighborhoods when it comes to retail and restaurants. But those buildings are, have no preservation to them whatsoever. In fact, an entire block is going to be redeveloped pretty soon. And across the street, we still have a lot of buildings. I have to think that the character of Old Bellevue is, owes a lot to the success of that neighborhood. And I'm wondering, are we doing anything to try to retain the character of Old Bellevue? Are we requiring that the new buildings that come in, maybe they retain the fronts, the storefronts of the older structures and replace them like we saw in San Diego? Is it called a fascectomy? Or are we doing, do we, are we working on that at all? Because it seems like for such a valuable neighborhood, we would want to try to preserve the character in some way. I don't know if you have an answer to that. And then my other thought, I don't know if the new development that's going in that space where the Night Market was, is going to have a through street? I believe it will because there's an alley there and people have to have access. It'd be really interesting if we partnered with the developer to put a glass atrium over that space so that people did not have to put up tents every time we did some kind of a Night Market, but might just lend itself to its own little marketplace, covered marketplace if we chose to do that. So those are my two comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I love the idea of the glass atrium. I always remember a few years ago when I visited Singapore, there is a famous food street that just has a glass covering over it so it is usable even during their heavy rain seasons. So I'll, next time I talk to the developer, I'll pass that idea along. And then with regards to the character and preservation, particularly for Old Bellevue, also, the city of Bellevue does not currently have a historic preservation ordinance. That would be a policy discussion as part of any future comprehensive plan or other similar land use work.
Well, I know in our comp plan, we, we require that they do something that is in character, in character of Old Bellevue, but maybe that's a conversation we can have with Development Services someday if our deputy city manager can carry that for me.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oops, I didn't hear you.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry.
Okay, our city manager. Excellent. All right, thank you. So we have one more study session item. Go ahead, Ms. Carlson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. The last study session is to provide the council and the public background on four construction projects occurring in South Bellevue this year, as well as the outreach and mitigation measures being employed to reduce traffic impacts. This is an informational item, and no direction is being asked, but you will have an opportunity, of course, to ask questions. Multiple departments have been involved in the project planning and implementation and are participating in the presentation tonight. From the Utilities Department, we have Director Lucy Liu and Linda DeBolt, Assistant Director of Engineering. From Transportation, we have Maher Walea, Assistant Director of Capital Program Services. And we also have from the City Manager's Office, Michaeline Fowler, Public Information Officer. And with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Liu.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malika Tien, and councilmembers. We're here to brief you on several high-visibility capital projects that will be in construction in 2024 in South Bellevue. We know that these projects cause traffic delays and that they impact the residents and businesses in the area. We recognize these impacts are not easy for the traveling public, and so what we want to do is to brief you on these projects for awareness tonight. These projects are critical for the integrity of our infrastructure as well as for the safety of our community. We're doing everything we can to lessen the traffic impacts where possible. We are also getting information out to the community for awareness in a variety of ways early and often so that folks can plan and adjust their travel routes if they are able. We are very fortunate to live in a community that works together, and we really appreciate everyone's patience and understanding as we construct these necessary projects to ensure the safety of the traveling public. And so here is our agenda tonight. We will highlight four construction projects, two utilities projects, and two Washington State Department of Transportation projects. Specifically, we will review the timing of the construction work, the necessary lane closures, our community outreach and communications plan, the measures we are taking to mitigate traffic impacts. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions you may have. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Linda and Maher to review the project details.
Thank you, Lucy. On these next two slides, we'll start by providing the traffic impacts of these four projects, and then we'll, then we're going to go through each project and provide more background and key details about each of them. To begin, I'll highlight the two utility projects shown on this slide. The Lakemont Boulevard Emergency Culvert Replacement Project started construction in late October, and it is required a full road closure to construct a new bridge. This road closure will continue to June. We realize this has had a major impact to the community who live in this part of town as well as commuters who travel through, through this corridor. We very much appreciate their patience during the initial and ongoing construction work. The Factoria Boulevard Stormwater Conveyance Improvement Project will be starting active construction this week with some initial lane closures for preparatory construction work. Then in March, the two northbound lanes will be closed to through traffic, and one southbound lane will be converted to a northbound lane. So the current five travel lanes will be reduced to three lanes to accommodate construction on the east side of the road. This will remain in place for approximately five months until late July. After that and during the rest of the year, there will be other intermittent northbound or southbound lane closures to complete construction activities. The lane closures, especially between March and July, are expected to cause significant travel delays, and because we know how much this affects the everyday lives of our community, we'll be communicating details about the construction lane closures using a variety of methods so people can be prepared. We'll also be taking several measures to We'll also be taking several measures to mitigate the traffic impacts, which I'll relay a bit later in this presentation.
Thank you, Linda. So in addition to the City Utilities Project, we have two major Washdott project taking place in South Bellevue. The Washdott Sunset Creek Fish Passage Project has been in construction since November last year and will proceed throughout this year. The current major impact on Southeast 36th Street, where the roadway is narrowed down to one lane to allow the, for the bridge to be built half at the time. So the second Washdott project, which I'm sure probably most of you familiar with, if you've been commuting on 405 south of Bellevue, probably never stuck in that project, have you? So anyways, that's a major project from downtown Bellevue to Torrenton. Major impacts are anticipated during full closures of freeway and also some of the access ramps. Next slide, please. On the next slide, just to bring to your attention, just to orient to where these projects are on the map, the yellow dot shows where the Factoria Boulevard Stormwater Project is located, and the green dot shows where the Washdott Sunset Creek Fish Passage Project is located. And you can see the proximity of these two projects. The Lakemont Boulevard Emergency Project is showing on a purple dot at the bottom of the map, right on the edge of Bellevue with King County. And of course, that pink line, 405 Project, shows the widening and express toll lane project, which is again proximity to the other projects in, in Bellevue. So that, back to you, Linda.
Thanks, Maher. Now I'll provide some background information, and as well as Maher, about these four projects and discuss the traffic impacts in more detail. So starting with the Lakemont Emergency Project, here's the city map again, showing the location of this project at the southern city limits, and the inset diagram shows the specific bridge location at the curve in the roadway where Coal Creek flows under Lakemont Boulevard. This emergency project was not originally planned in our CIP. We discovered in late 2022 that the stormwater culvert that carries Coal Creek under Lakemont Boulevard is failing. This culvert poses a high risk of total failure in a large storm, which could cause the roadway to collapse, failure of the utilities within the roadway, and flooding of adjacent properties. To avoid these risks, a bridge is being built to span the creek and protect the road from failure at the site of the culvert. To build the bridge, we needed to close a portion of Lakemont Boulevard for approximately eight months. We've worked with the city of Newcastle to establish a detour route along Newcastle Golf Club Road, Coal Creek Parkway, and Forest Drive Southeast. This map shows the detour route that's been in place since late October. The road closure is in the curved part of Lakemont Boulevard, as shown in red on the map. This is between the Red Town Trailhead and 155th Avenue Southeast. The detour routes on Forest Drive Southeast, Newcastle Golf Club Road, and Coal Creek Parkway are shown in green on the map. The initial first few weeks that the detour was in place were very impactful to the traveling public and residents in the area, with significant travel time increases. With measures that our Transportation Department undertook to modify the timing of signals in this area, and changes to lane configurations at the intersection of Forest Drive and Coal Creek Parkway, the travel times have been reduced by about 28%. So next, I'd like to relay information about the Factoria Boulevard Stormwater Improvement Project. This project is needed to address the major stormwater flooding that's occurred on this street due to large, high-intensity storms. The pictures show some of the roadway flooding that's occurred in the past. The top picture is from a storm in August of 2014, where businesses were flooded, streets were inaccessible, and the community was significantly disrupted. The bottom two pictures are from a recent storm, just last November. There have been other recorded storm events that caused roadway impacts over the last 20 years. To increase the stormwater capacity, utilities will be replacing the aging and undersized stormwater pipes with a much larger stormwater system, and also rehabilitating the Richards Creek Outlet Channel that's adjacent to Factoria Village. This is a necessary project to solve a major flooding risk for this highly-traveled major arterial, and we've done a lot of work over the past five years to develop this project and, excuse me, now get it ready for construction. So in addition to the design process, I just want to highlight some very important other factors. One is that we've conducted an inclusive public outreach process, starting in the fall of 2020, which included reaching out to businesses, property owners, community members, and the general public to communicate about the project and receive input. We've also obtained the required state and federal environmental permits from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Army Corps of Engineers. This permitting is a long process, and the permits require construction to be done within certain timelines. We've negotiated easement agreements necessary for construction from adjacent property owners. These easement agreements have specific timelines as well for construction. We've secured $6.8 million of funding from the King County Flood Control District to help pay for this project. This funding obligated us to start construction now. We've hired the construction contractor, and the contractor has secured their staffing, equipment, and materials, including fabrication of the big stormwater box conveyance system for this project. And then finally, we want to get this project done before the 2024 holiday season, when traffic is in the heaviest in this area. This schematic map shows the project location on Factoria Boulevard, between Southeast 38th Street on the south end and the 3600 block across from Factoria Village. And then the blue line on the, on the graphic depicts the location of the new stormwater conveyance structure for a distance of about 700 feet. The map also shows the Richards Creek Channel adjacent to Factoria Village, for which the project will also be providing environmental improvements. This is a cross-section of Factoria Boulevard, looking northbound. On the right side of the graphic, you'll see the construction zone. This is on the east side of the street, where both northbound lanes are needed to construct the big stormwater box conveyance system. That's what's driving the need for the closure of the northbound lanes for five months during the spring and summer of 2024. On the left side of the graphic, where the blue car is located, adjacent to the median barrier, you'll see one of the southbound lanes will be converted to a northbound lane. As I mentioned earlier, the, the total existing five lanes will be reduced to three lanes, one northbound and two southbound. There will also be intermittent lane closures outside of this five-month period for construction of other project work, and that's starting this week. So I am going to turn this now back over to Maher.
Thank you, Linda. So the next couple of slides, can I give you a brief description on the Washdott projects I mentioned earlier? So this one here, the Washdott Sunset Creek Fish Passage Project. Washdott is already under construction to replace the existing culvert conveying Sunset Creek under I-90, under Southeast 36th Street, and under Southeast, and, sorry, under East Gateway, with new bridges to establish fish passage in this stretch of Sunset Creek. The Southeast 36th Street Bridge will be built half at a time, alternating traffic eastbound and westbound. Traffic flows are being channeled through a signal lane, a single lane with directional signal. The signal is tied into the city Adaptive Signal Control System and coordinated with other signals in the vicinity. East Gateway will remain open while Southeast 36th Bridge is being built and vice versa. So that's part of the working with Washdott to make sure they work on one bridge at the time. Next slide, please. The next project, again, the I-405 Rinton to Bellevue Project, which will create a dual express toll lane system between SR-167 in Rinton and Northeast 6th Street in Bellevue. We are noting here some of the major closures that are planned for this year within the city of Bellevue. And as the information we have right now, in March 2024, that's only a couple of months from now, there will be southbound off-ramp to Coal Creek Parkway closure in June this year, weekend full closure of I-405 and Newport Hills Park and Ride Interchange, and another full weekend closure will take place in September 2024 at the Coal Creek Parkway Interchange. Now, I just want to remind everybody, although we put the dates out there, as you know, construction and schedule subject to change, but what does not change is our coordination with Washdott. We work very closely with them in managing changes, managing major activity, minimizing impact. Want to go to the next slide? Some of the example we do, we work with Washdott, example of the coordination effort. Factoria Boulevard Project, traffic analysis incorporate into Washdott Sunset Creek Project traffic analysis to optimize traffic operation for both projects during the period where there's construction overlap. So we do our traffic analysis, they do, and then we look, okay, when there's overlap, what's the, the cumulative impact there? City staff meets biweekly with Washdott and its contractors for the Sunset Creek and I-405 projects. And this is like the formal meetings, but when there's overlap activities, our staff working daily with Washdott and their team on some of these challenging areas. Also, another example, city staff will monitor traffic on Southeast 36th Street and Factoria Boulevard and the surrounding street during construction and adjust signal timing if required. And anything, again, the communication going through the, the city construction team and Washdott construction team. Another example, where part of the requirement for the contractor on the Factoria Stormwater Conveyance Project, that contractor will be meeting on a monthly basis with the Sunset Creek Washdott Project to coordinate and plan their mutual construction work. Overall, we have a really good relationship with our regional partner, Washdott, and we really appreciate the partnership there. Next slide. So now I'm going to hand it back over, or hand it over to Michaeline and Linda to talk about the city community outreach and traffic mitigation strategies.
Thank you. Good evening. Our communication outreach plan is to plan for no surprises by communicating early and often to residents, businesses, and members of the public that are traveling on our city roads. We are informing the community why these projects are necessary to do right now, and we're also advising on ways we can all help mitigate the impact to the traffic. It's important to note that we're making sure to use accessible language in all our communications, to make sure we are reaching the diverse community impacted by these projects. We want to hear from the community, and we want to know what they are really experiencing out on the roads. So we are establishing a hotline that community members can call and get feedback and answer and ask questions about the progress of these projects. As Linda mentioned, in the fall of 2020, we did start public outreach on these projects. And I would like to point out on the screen here are some of the efforts that we are currently doing and efforts that we're going to do during the duration of these projects. Starting with our public-facing websites, these pages are the community's one true source of information on these projects. It provides the most up-to-date and current information, the schedule and the current impacts. We really hope that everyone uses these websites to stay up to date on the progress of these projects. Each page has a public outreach video with more detailed information on the projects. We amplify these project pages across all our communication channels, including the city newsletters and social media. We're also going out to the Factoria neighborhood to meet with the community impacted by these projects. We're going to be having tabling sessions at the Factoria Village and the Factoria Mall to hear from the community. And of course, our most effective measure of getting the word out are the digital signs on the roads. When those signs go up, people pay attention, and then they do go visit our website to find out how they are impacted by these projects. Now that we're actively informing and inviting the community about these projects and their impacts, I'm going to hand it back to Linda to talk about some of the mitigation measures that we put into place.
Thank you, Michaeline. So in order to mitigate the traffic impacts of these lane closures, the first couple of measures that are shown here are related to monitoring and adapting to changes in traffic patterns. The city uses traffic cameras and an adaptive signal system, as well as other software tools, to get information on travel times on city streets. These methods allow us to monitor what's happening on the street in real time, with the objective of making signal or channelization changes to optimize traffic flows. We use variable message signs, as Michaeline mentioned, to communicate to travelers what to expect before lane closures occur and to recommend other alternative routes. Flaggers and uniformed police officers help to ensure motorists move through the corridor safely and as smoothly as possible. And I just want to note that we really appreciate the, the help and assistance of Police Department, you know, to provide uniformed police officers when, when they're needed for specific traffic operations, and we do actually intend to have them available during the, the first week of, of lane closures. And then finally, getting the project done as fast as possible, particularly for the Factoria Boulevard project, but also for Lakemont, is accomplished by having contractors work extended hours. And on the Factoria project, our contractor will be working long shifts, they'll be working double shifts in order to get the project done as quickly as possible.
So just to sum it up, these projects are necessary for the safety of our community, for the safety of the traveling public. Lakemont Boulevard is at risk of collapsing, and the emergency project will make sure that it does not. Factoria Boulevard continues to flood, that's threatening businesses and the traveling public, and the storm conveyance project will protect that area from flooding. We're going to continue to put mitigation measures in place to lessen the traffic impacts as much as possible, and we're going to continue to keep the public informed early and often for the duration of these projects. We appreciate the partnership with the King County Flood Control District, who is co-funding the Factoria project, and we really appreciate the community's patience and understanding. We realize we're asking the public to adjust their travel, if they're able, during this period of construction, and we just really appreciate the community's cooperation. At the end of the day, we support safe and effective travel and want to ensure that our infrastructure continues to protect the community for decades to come. And so this concludes our briefing. We're very happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll start with our new transportation liaison, Councilmember Nguyen-Hass.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. This is frustrating, but on the other hand, who could have anticipated the discovery of the, what, Lakemont Boulevard and, and the emergency actions that we have to take as, as a city? The impact wouldn't be quite as, quite as big if, if that hadn't happened, I believe, and it's really going to create some very difficult travel times for families, for those trying to get to work, or to open up their business, et cetera. But full-heartedly agree with your comments about, you know, we want, we want safe travel in our city, we want to do this as quickly as possible. So I appreciate all the comments that are being made in terms of trying to mitigate those impacts and, and trying to make this painful travel period as quick as possible. So I really appreciate the fact that we're doing double shifts. Although one question I did have was, residents might think, well, can they just do the work at night? Rather than double shifts, could they just do the work at night and then during the day? Could they just do the work at night and then during the day go back to regular traffic flows? Is that something you looked at, and did that just not make sense at this time? But that's my first question. Go ahead and answer, and then I'll move to my next one.
Yeah, actually, we are going to be doing work at night in addition. So the double shifts is one shift during the day and a shift during the night. That way, we get the work done faster, but it also helps to alleviate the impacts for daytime travelers. Usually, there's less traffic at night. So we have inspectors and contractors that are going to be doing some of the work at nighttime.
Okay, okay. And then your outreach, which I appreciate how extensive it is, what kind of, and I appreciate the efforts to just keep everyone apprised of what's going on, and I'm just curious, especially with our major employers like T-Mobile, for example, have we been looking at different types of mitigation tactics? Are we actually offering up tactics in terms of what the impact will be and offer up some solutions that they might want to take a look at? What does that look like?
Yeah, good question. And, you know, we're working very closely with major employers such as T-Mobile. In fact, we had a recent meeting with them to do that very thing, is to, you know, let them know what our plans are, and we did, you know, some good collaborative problem-solving on how to make sure that the schedules for lane closures and, you know, specific operations that are going on during construction can be communicated to their employee base. And so we are partnering with them and really working on providing them updates to what's changing during construction. We talked with them about providing, every three weeks, we'll be giving them an update of what's happening, you know, on the project. And as changes happen, they have then the opportunity to message that to their employees, to their managers, and create mechanisms within their company to be able to mitigate the impacts, looking at, you know, where people are coming from in different parts of the city to the campus there, and just seeing, you know, where are the driveway impacts actually happening based upon the contractors' activities.
Okay, that's great to hear. One last question regarding the neighborhood associations in that area. Have we reached out to the, like, the Eastgate Neighborhood Association as well to help facilitate the outreach and to make sure that everyone associated with that association is aware of this as well?
So we do have a key parties list that includes the neighborhood associations, and they are getting regular communications as well. We have a subscribers base of a little over 1,500 that has signed up to receive email and text alerts, and that includes a lot of the neighborhood associations as well.
Okay.
And so they would get that communication rate three weeks as well.
Okay. Because I feel especially bad for that neighborhood since we just had all that construction on Southeast 36th, and I know the timing didn't work out with the state and the funding to address the fish. But it's unfortunate that we get Southeast 36th Street done, and then we're going right back in there and causing issues again for that same neighborhood. So, but I know that you're doing everything possible to mitigate the impacts and really appreciate all the fantastic outreach that you're doing, and hopefully, you know, working the double shifts, et cetera, we can get this even, complete even quicker than we think it might take, which would be wonderful for that neighborhood. So thank you so much for making the best of a difficult situation.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. The drainage issue in Factoria, is that just a function of growth up the hill, or is there another reason that that problem has occurred?
Really, the reason is due to the aging stormwater pipe that's in the roadway. It's about 50 years old, it was built in the 70s, and it is undersized for the kind of storms that we have today. So we have large storms, and that's what's causing the flooding. There's more stormwater coming down onto the street than the existing conveyance system right now can handle, and so it stays on the street. And back in 2014, it was four feet deep, and it really, you know, closed down the roadway for the whole day. And so it's storm-driven, and what we are doing is installing a new system that's designed for the 100-year storm, and that's going to provide a lot more capacity to handle these large, high-intensity storms that we get, you know, you know, this increasing in frequency in late current years. So that's the cause, really, of the problem. But I would say also that because the existing culvert has reached its useful life, that's another driver. We don't want that pipe to fail like we have at Lakemont Boulevard. When we have pipes that fail, then you have an emergency project, and you don't have an opportunity to do the project with a lot of planning, and we've been planning this project for five years.
Do we have any other similar situations in the city where we have undersized pipes or other kinds of serious issues like this?
Yes, we do, and we have a number of projects that are in design right now. One of them is the Kelsey Creek Culvert at Lakemont Boulevard project. That is also a flooding and infrastructure project. We also, you know, have the project that we're working with transportation on in the, I think it's in that, do you know which one I'm talking about, Maher?
No, I don't. Larson Lake?
Larson Lake, that's it, yeah. So there's several large projects, many of these we're working with the King County Flood Control District on, and the Larson Lake project, as well as Factoria, have county flood district funding. And there's one more that I'm thinking of is another Kelsey Creek project at Lake Hills Connector. That is both a flooding as well as fish passage culvert project. So several projects, you know, have these kinds of issues around the city, and that's part of our capital program.
Okay, and you mentioned too that the funding from King County requires us to get going, but that funding also has a real advantage too, right, in that it is a positive impact on ratepayers, and so that we have some advantage there in getting that additional funding and helping to kind of hold our costs down a little bit?
Absolutely. So the King County funding on the Factoria project is $6.8 million. The total project cost is $15.6 million, and so that's approximately 44% of the total cost of the Factoria project. So that helps out quite a bit, and as you say, it helps to keep the rates down.
Good, and I certainly appreciate all the coordination and coordinating with the state and having the contractors to coordinate. I think that is really helpful. And then to the hotline and website and social media stuff, I think is really going to be great, because I understand how dynamic it's just going to be in there, and it's, you know, you can plan and, you know, alert people to certain issues that are coming up, but, you know, it's very hard, you know, to stay too far ahead of that. So I really like that. It just, it kind of strikes me that this is really what a good plan looks like. It's still really going to be tough on people who need to commute through there. But, I mean, the bottom line, right, is that Lakemont was an emergency that, you know, we didn't know about, but that we couldn't let go, and that, you know, the Factoria Stormwater project, like you mentioned, I mean, you started on that five years ago, and at some point, you know, it's not possible, it doesn't seem, right, to slow that down or to not continue moving forward with it. And again, the mitigation plan, I think, is great, and it's just going to be frustrating and difficult. But I think you've done a great job, and this is really what a great plan looks like, still very, very difficult, but well done, and I'm sure that we'll work our way through it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. The comments made so far are really, really good on this, and I just want to add to it that, and I think you're doing absolutely the right thing. You know, the negative impact on delay will be even greater to the communities, and it's hard to, the thing about it, of course, is it's hard to communicate to people, and most people really don't hear about it or think about it and don't get it until it starts. And halfway through it, they say, oh, wait a minute, can you stop this now? And it's very difficult. And the other factor, of course, and I just live up in Woodridge and go there all the time, is just day and night between the traffic even five years ago and now. And with it being a major pathway for people to come in and out of Bellevue, they've discovered Factoria Boulevard, and so they go, so it's really, really difficult. And so it's a complex thing. So I think you've, given the circumstances, you've done a really terrific job on this. And you're, you know, the communications, and I appreciate what you were saying about you're continuing to let people know what's going on out there, which is very, very important. And, you know, I don't think there's really much else you could be doing, and it sounds like the more you talk about it, we understand how complex this is and how, and I think really how well it's being managed. There are always going to be blips in traffic and road construction, everything else. But the other factor is that we have to deal with is that the number of people, the climate change, all these other factors, including when you have more people building things and more housing and all that, it's not like it was five, 10 years ago even, and certainly not like 20 or 30 when it came here. And so it's something that has been, should have probably, if we had, we probably wouldn't know about as much, it could have been done earlier, but you have to get to a certain point when you do it. So it's something that really has to be done. So keep, I think, keep up the good work and really talk to people, let them know, and if we stop one of these projects, it would cause more pain than if we continue right now. So I really appreciate it, and I appreciate all the comments and questions you've had. I don't have any others to add to that.
Good point. Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. This was a really thorough presentation, I appreciate it, because what it keeps me thinking about is this is the work that we do, which is being very thoughtful about public safety. So we take care of these issues so that it keeps the public safe and it reduces the risk to the city, so it's a win-win for everybody. And I think that you have a really comprehensive communication plan that you presented to us, so I think that part is really good. The only thing I might suggest is that as you think about the communication notification, just because of that area and the amount of people that might be coming in that are not necessarily living right in that area, so when you think about, like, is it, you know, 500 feet or half a mile, and I only say that because when my daughters were younger, actually getting through Factoria to go to the gym or the dance studio, and there's the bed mitten club, and so I guess my point is there are a lot of uses that may have folks that are regular drivers through that area but isn't, doesn't live right there. So being able to help those businesses maybe reach their customers to also find alternative routes will be really important. And then I was wondering about on the digital road signs, I think, I'm wondering if there's a way to put those out even earlier, because as people drive through, they might be more likely to see that sign saying, hey, construction coming, check out this QR code, versus things that might show up in their social media or even email that they may not read because it's not in their conscious mind. And then I think that whole pressing on, here's the real-time traffic map, go take a look so you can see what's going on. And then lastly, I really appreciate Councilmember Hamilton's point about what are these other areas of flooding that we want to make sure that we are moving forward with as quickly as possible, because I don't know if it was one of the ones you mentioned, but I know that road that goes over to the Kelsey Creek Farm and right behind the International School has been an area of flooding for many years, and it's been a few years since my daughters were at that school, but, so I'm not sure if that's been fixed now, but I think there are a few of these spots where moving forward with more urgency would be helpful. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Well, I'm very proud of our utility department being the liaison, you know, I can speak on behalf of what you guys do. But, you know, in spite of all this, it's something we have to do. So, I mean, no matter how tough it is going to be, you know, we have to face what's going to happen. And unfortunately, you know, I live in Factoria area, so I know what you're talking about. I probably drive through there every day, so I think some of the comment made is very relevant. When we make communication, that's important, number one. I think neighborhood community is very important. I live in Somerset, you know, and there are other communities around, and they all have lots of people there, and I think we need to let them know. If we haven't, the sooner the better, and also keep reminding them they have their communication network as well, so don't forget, right? What do you call that? Neighbor, whatever, social network they use.
Next door.
Next door. They keep on telling people everything, so it's probably a good way to communicate with a lot of folks. And I think so, I think, you know, Councilmember Newenhouse made a really good point. It doesn't hurt if you don't tell people, people tend to blame you, right? But if you let them inform, and I think Bellevue citizens recognize what we have to put up with these, because it is for our benefit, which is what, you know, Councilmember Hamilton made the excellent point, wonderful observation, these things are going to happen. And when it happens, if we don't take care of it, the ratepayer is going to be paying for it. And so we're talking about utility that's aging infrastructures, we're talking about climate change that's coupled with growth, so all these things are happening, going to speed up, you know, the problem that we're going to face, you mentioned, a lot of things we're doing. We're working with King County Metro, trying to figure out, you know, how to take care of the whole system. So it's not easy. Infrastructure is costly if we don't take care of them in advance. And so I hope that, you know, our policy utilities, you know, reserve fund, make sure that we anticipate things that may be happening. But 50 years ago, we can't anticipate what's happening, so we got to keep up with it. So I don't hesitate, we need to do whatever we have to do, but at the same time, we have to let the public know what is happening so that the council can then take action and make sure that we don't get ourselves into the big trouble. So finally, I want to thank our King County Councilmember Regan Dunn for getting you the six and a half million bucks, and we want to do more of that, you know? I mean, that's the reason why we go to Washington DC, to get more infrastructure money. That's why we go to the state, Department of Commerce, to get more money to do other things, and that's completely what Councilmember Hamilton is talking about, and we all have to agree. So I think that we need to keep talking about it, keep that in mind, and making sure the public knows what's happening. Maybe we can do better, do more, but we don't know until we get to it. So the question is, I also appreciate Councilmember Zanz talking about, this is a region of facility, Factoria. It's, most of them come here, Newcastle people come here, people from the east, they come here, you know, so it is a business center, so small businesses, they're going to be affected. We need to figure out how, we talk about economic development just before this, what do we do with our, you know, small business, restaurants, cleaners, and various businesses? They got to be aware, and then we have to work with them, maybe help come up with some mitigation or way of, you know, taking care of them. It's the care that we show, the care we do to the best we can, that's what's going to make a difference. So I appreciate what you're doing, I appreciate looking at it, and I think this is a very good conversation that most of us get to appreciate, you know, what you guys do, what we're looking at, what challenge we face in the infrastructure we're facing, and all the things that are happening. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much, great presentation. I also learned a lot from my fellow councilmembers. Just wanted to echo what have been said, they are emergencies and we should just deal with it, but the way that we can anticipate that, as Councilmember Lee mentioned, they are all aging infrastructure. Hopefully, there are some budget statewide and federal that we can just start inspecting and be more active instead of reactive to deal with these emergencies. I have two questions. The first one, I am very impressed by all of these public engagement methods that you have, and amazing list, but do we know which of these methods yields in more number of people that we can inform? And if we have the answer for that, are we allocating budget on these different methods to optimize the outreach to the number of people that we are informing? That's my first question. Do you want me to? Do you want me to ask the second one, or do you want to respond to this one?
Sure, go ahead.
Great. The second question is, in the Sunset Creek Fish Passage and the stormwater, have we ensured the minimal disruption to the ecosystem, the local ecosystem that is there, the life wild and everything else? And also, are we planning to even enhance their life after the project is done? Does it make sense what I'm asking? Perfect, done. That's my two questions. Thank you.
So I'll talk about the Sunset Creek again. This is a part of Wash Dot program to remove blocks that they were created way back when they built the freeways, and taking that culvert and replacing that with bridges to improve the fish habitat in that area of the creek. So, all the studies and all the environmental studies been done on Wash Dot side.
That's not in our hand, thank you.
And I'll just add in a little bit more on the Factoria Boulevard project. We are doing stream and riparian enhancements in that Richards Creek Channel area that, if you remember on the graphic, it's right next to Factoria Boulevard. That is the outfall for the outfall area for the stormwater pipe, and it is a natural area. It is an improvement that we're doing for the environment, and it was part of the permitting requirements with the State Fish and Wildlife Department and the Corps of Engineers. So the answer is yes, this project does include environmental improvements as well as the stormwater flood prevention improvements.
That's awesome, thank you.
And for the communication outreach, our most effective communication is targeted communications, and we are keeping and maintaining a list of key interested parties that includes the HOAs, includes the businesses, and so that they do get targeted communications that they can then get to their customer base in their memberships. That is our most effective way, and we are continuing to build upon that list as well as we find other businesses that are not on the list, we add them, other HOAs as well. We're working with the city's neighborhoods group as well. They have a direct line to a lot of HOAs, and so they have a newsletter as well, and so they have been communicating out as well. And most effective is always going to be targeted communications, because you're meeting people where they are.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys.
I just have two questions. I appreciate this conversation, really good information, great comments and questions. I know something is working that we are all doing, because we had one of our best historical best salmon runs this year. So, you know, it's been a long time since we've seen that high of volume of salmon in our waters, so, and it takes a while to measure the change, so we're doing something right, and I hope that we continue to see a rise in the numbers. My questions are, when we have done nighttime work in downtown, and it seems like such a great idea because it's going to speed up the project and get it over sooner, we get a lot of emails from people who don't seem to understand or see the value of that, and I'm just wondering, has everybody kind of been talked to about the benefits of working through the night, and have they kind of bought into the idea of doing that, or would they prefer to have a longer project that's only done during the day?
That's a great question, and I think that the input that we've gotten back from the Factoria community adjacent to the project site, there haven't been substantial complaints about the night work. I mean, there are always impacts for people who are nearby, if you have an apartment building or residential area next to a construction site, that's a lot harder. But we, you know, we had some night work actually happen already. Comcast needed to come in and do some night work to do relocation of the fiber lines in advance of this project, and what I've heard from our construction manager is that there haven't been a lot of complaints about the night work. So that was a good indication that, at least in this commercial corridor, it's not been as big of an impact. Now, absolutely, there are more problems if we have construction happening in the middle of a neighborhood and we're waking people up at night with noisy, you know, truck traffic and construction activities. So, there may be complaints when things really get going, and so we're just going to need to manage through that, I think, and again, there's the benefit of getting this project done a lot faster by allowing the night work to happen for the duration of that main installation of the box conveyance system.
Okay, great. And then my last question, you didn't mention whether we're partnering with the City of Newcastle at all on this project and detours and things like that, so what are your thoughts?
Yes, we absolutely are partnering with Newcastle. For the Lakemont Bridge project, part of the detour is the Newcastle Golf Club Road, and so we worked with the Public Works Director there, Jeff Bronze, and his traffic folks to make sure that they were okay with the detour route, and our transportation folks worked with Newcastle from the standpoint of timing of the signals. So Newcastle actually also had some signal changes in order to make the flow of traffic move smoother, from what I understand.
Great. Okay, no other questions?
A couple quick ones, relating to what just talked about, so quick, earthquake. One is on the idea of getting people to know, we had them before, you mentioned digital signal about alternative routes. This is just one way to go anywhere, so you have information, you can show people, you know, it's probably best if it is alternative. Second, a question about Sunset Fish Passage. I read somewhere, somebody said, there's no fish going through anymore, so why put another passage? Is that true, or is that not the fact?
I can't comment on true or not, but again, this is part of a statewide program that the DOT taking on removing barriers to reestablish fish habitat, so...
It's not what I've heard.
Who, yeah, okay, this is just a question for us to note. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, this, again, I'm just going to say thank you for your presentation. We're going to not, we will not have a meeting next week, we will be celebrating Martin Luther King Junior Day, and we will be having our city-hosted events, including the health fair celebration at Crossroads. So thank you very much. We will see everybody on January 22nd. We are adjourned.